Oh, I think we're good now, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, Access TV, are we back on? Okay, we're ready to go. Back to you now.
Natalie Fisher, Director of Human Resources. So, for consideration and discussion, to talk about furlough and layoffs. We talked about reduction in force and layoffs, but previously, we had talked about furloughs and exactly what that means. Just so you're aware, the City of Salina does not currently have furlough defined, nor do we have a furlough policy. We had just talked about the reduction in force and layoff policy. So, in looking for a possible definition, as defined by KAR 1-14-11, a furlough is a mandatory leave without pay for a preset number of hours during each pay period covered by the furlough. So, in that definition, an employee could be working none at all, or on a significantly reduced schedule, or just partially reduced schedule. Typically, with a furlough, leave balances are frozen, not exhausted, for lack of a better comparison, the pause buttons just hit until we redetermine that the individual comes back. You do have an anticipated return date of these employees. It's shorter term than a layoff. We don't consider that necessarily a termination. Things like health insurance contributions can continue, and employee rights would be retained. A furlough is commonly used when an employer prefers to retain those employees but just can't afford it due to budget constraints. And comparison to the layoff, the layoffs, obviously, longer term, is considered a termination. You don't have an anticipated return date, it's unknown. More processing in terms of rehiring if they do, if you are able to bring back that employee. And then, an option for continuing the benefits, it would be a COBRA scenario where the employee, former employee, then would have to pay for all of the health insurance premium, both the employee and the employer amount, as well as a small administration fee on top of that, so rather pricey.
Commissioner Franz, a question. So, as I understand this, you could furlough somebody who was regularly a full-time employee and furlough them for 20 hours a week. They would retain their benefit package. We would pay them 20 hours a week, and they could file for unemployment to cover the other 20 hours per week. So, it is, in effect, a way to reduce hours without taking them from full-time to part-time status with loss of benefits.
Correct.
That's what, okay.
So, before we talk more about some of the options, just to give you a glimpse of what our current workforce looks like, we have 12 departments. Within those 12 departments, we have 30 different divisions, approximately 200 different job classifications, and 448 employees. 346 of the employees are funded by the general fund. 340 of these are classified full-time, three classified part-time, and three regular part-time. And then, those not funded by the general fund, all other funds, 102 employees, including 100 classified full-time and two classified part-time. So, just an overview with Kansas unemployment. So, unemployment insurance provides, the unemployment insurance provides short-term financial assistance to individuals who are involuntarily unemployed. Benefits are limited to a maximum between 16 and 26 weeks. That's determined by Kansas law, and currently, it is covered up to 26 weeks. They're paid from a trust fund by employers through their unemployment insurance taxes. Rates are paid by employers based on a combination of both statewide experience, what's going on in our overall state market, as well as individual employer's experience rating, or the number of claims being charged to your claims history. I will note, last week, we listened to the Kansas Department of Labor Town Hall that they held to cover kind of the state of unemployment and some other information that will be coming. They just assured everyone that the current fund is very solvent, that the balance was just under $1 billion, and in terms of solvency, Kansas is number 14 in the country. So, that was good to hear. As far as who's eligible, a person must be unemployed to receive unemployment. Unemployed for purposes of receiving benefits means they might be performing no work and not receiving wages, or working less than full-time and receiving lower than what they would typically be, less than the individual's weekly benefit amount he or she otherwise would receive if fully unemployed. Translation there is, there is a computation that then the state looks at the highest, I'll back up, they look at the last five quarters of wages, may or may not be under the City of Salina's employ, and then, they average those quarters, the first four of the last five quarters, they look at that quarterly total, take 4.25% times that quarterly wage, and that is how they define the weekly benefit amount. The minimum that an individual would receive is 122, the maximum is 488.
So, Natalie did a good job of describing it. It is a complicated calculation. If you think of one week out of a quarter, that's one out of 12, that's 8.3%. The unemployment benefit is 4.25%, so inherently, it is less than full wages, and then, it also has a dollar cap of $488 a week. So, those two factors combined will most likely cause an employee not to get, you know, full compensation on unemployment like they would if they're working full-time.
Yeah. Natalie Fisher, in multiple areas, the word involuntarily is used, so that's something that we are keeping in mind as we're having the discussions, I mean, staff discussions, and then, in preparing information to come to you, that it's action taken by the employer, where the employee ends up with involuntary unemployment status to qualify. Other eligibility requirements include, the individual has to be able to perform the work in his or her usual occupation. If something would happen where they're not able to do their regular job, it would disqualify them. They have to be available to accept the work if offered, and then, they have to typically be searching for work each week. With the COVID-19 pandemic occurring, that is one of the provisions that have been waived is the state is not requiring that active work seeking is occurring. I jumped ahead and gave a rough explanation of how the benefits are determined, but this goes through it. Again, a minimum of $122 per week capped at 488.
A question, Ms. Fisher. This is Commissioner Ryan. And on the unemployment insurance taxes, looks to me like everybody would be paying more of those next year because of the number of filings. Is there a way to gauge how that might affect, I mean, what is it now? What could it be? And does it ever go away once it goes up?
Yeah, Natalie Fisher, currently, we have a pretty low experience rating. I don't have it with me. I'm going to ballpark it to be about 11, .11%. A .11 on the taxable wages. City of Salina sees it fluctuate anywhere from just under that, maybe .1 up to .14. We don't have huge variation. I wish I knew, for budget purposes, what that's going to look like next year. I do think we are going to take a hit, and it's going to increase. We'll get to it in just a little bit, but part of the underlying CARES Act provisions, they've come out and said that they can't pass that on to states, so at least we have a little bit of insulation from the additional federal benefit that will be offered.
Mayor Hoppick here. When we're looking at unemployment benefits, those are not state or federal tax withheld or Social Security, is that correct?
Correct. The unemployment benefits is taxable income, but unless the employee who is receiving the benefit goes on to the Department of Labor website and opts to have taxes withheld, they will receive a 1099G come January of the year following when they've received the benefits.
Okay, so there's none withheld, but it is taxable?
Correct. One other thing to note, if unemployment arises from the reduction in hours, the employee still may be eligible for benefits. A caveat there is, no benefits will be paid for any week in which the value of weekly wages exceeds the weekly benefit amount. So, someone that is a higher wage earner, if their hours aren't reduced a lot, and what they are still working would still fit into the calculation of that cap, that weekly benefit amount cap of 488, they would not receive additional unemployment. They would just be incurring a reduction in their take-home pay, their gross pay for that matter.
Go through that scenario one more time.
Sure. To try to give an example, someone that is used to working a standard 40-hour per week, if, let's say, their hours were reduced by 20%, and they were then working 32 hours per week, if their wages at 32 hours per week could still be computed to equate to higher than that weekly benefit amount of 488, they're not going to receive any additional benefit. They are just working 32 hours a week instead of 40, and not having an unemployment insurance benefit. Now, again, I stress, this is just the general unemployment, and we have, by contrast, a different program that handles that situation much differently that I'll cover in a few minutes.
Okay, I'll wait till that.
Also, it is our understanding, by looking at information, reviewing with legal, some of the statute, seeking other explanation, that there are scenarios that would also reduce the value of benefits, or the wages would be reduced by the value of benefits to work against them, to the extent the value exceeds 25%. I understand that's very confusing. I guess, to summarize, someone in a reduced, or either substantially reduced or completely reduced schedule on a furlough-type situation could have the amount of insurance that the City of Salina is covering for them work against their weekly benefit amount to reduce that.
So, Mike Skreg, this is something we really struggled with, to, number one, make sure we were reading the statute correctly, and that we understood its application, and so there's a couple of things going on here. One, it seems to be a discrepancy in the provision that health insurance is being provided, you know, pre the unemployment scenario, but it seems very clear in the statutes that if, while drawing unemployment, that is provided, that counts as wages, like the scenario that Natalie was describing, as if they'd worked. They're getting benefit that counts against them. So, that was our read of the statute. That was the guidance we were seeing and some frequently asked questions, and as we pursued it more, the League of Kansas Municipalities was able to reach out to the Department of Labor, and they indicated that the Department of Labor responded that they do not currently make a deduction to the weekly benefit amount for health insurance unless the employer directly pays the employee cash, direct deposit, et cetera, to cover that cost of the health insurance. So, that application seems to be, you know, probably more practical and more favorable, but it doesn't seem to be consistent with the statute or some of the guidance we were seeing previously. So, while, and, Ms. Fisher, did you have a chance to talk to another employer that's been through this, and did they indicate they'd seen it applied that way by the Department of Labor? Or am I mistaken?
I did talk to an employer who's very well-versed. While this specific scenario might not be what his employer is accustomed to, it was his understanding, and we didn't get into specifically how the benefits might be paid, but it was his understanding that health insurance coverage could reduce the weekly benefit. So, some information that we definitely need to clarify, whether that's through the Department of Labor or other, but that's, I guess that's why he said it may decrease that, because we need to know a little more there.
So, as we've looked at all of these programs, we've tried to not only look at, you know, just cost savings to the city, but be mindful of the impact on employees, and as you see from some of the tables we provide you, we tried to be pretty detailed in looking at that. So, it's a little difficult for us to have confidence either way of how it might be administered. I think, I think the information we got, you know, does qualify it a little bit, that they currently do not make that a deduction. I think that probably is the case. Don't have any reason to believe they would change, but the language seems pretty clear that they could. And so, our concern is, we can't say with confidence whether that might be an unintended consequence of a furlough.
Natalie Fisher, Director of Human Resources. The Department of Labor has recently reported, obviously, a significant amount of increase on their workload, both in terms of call volume and in terms of claims being filed. A lot of individuals have been complaining about delays to get their benefits processed, and they did explain the CARES Act, which we'll cover in a little more detail shortly. It's what's providing additional benefit for individuals that qualify for unemployment insurance, the federal supplement, the CARES Act. They have not fully implemented it yet. As of last week, they mentioned they anticipated it would be within the next one to two weeks, so any time this week up to another week, and they hope to have it implemented. One thing that I will note, in the event that the City of Salina would be in a position where we have to take action to change employee status, we would take advantage of what the state calls their mass layoff form. It's a spreadsheet that's uploaded directly into their website. It fast-tracks the claims. It gives you direct access to an individual at the Department of Labor that you're specifically talking with. What it does is, the employer, at that point, is filing that initial claim on behalf of the employee. The mass label behind it is really a misnomer. It's not intended to be mass by any means. It could be employers with only one individual being impacted, but it's just a courtesy, and we're well-versed now in getting some additional explanation that we would definitely take that action on behalf of any employees impacted if it rose to the level that we wanted to file a claim on their behalf.
Commissioner Ryan here. So, the math of a furlough is to get the hours down low enough to stay under the 488 limit, and then, hope to supplement that with, and I don't know where the medical falls in, that's an unknown, but supplement that with the unemployment from the state, and then, possibly, the $600 they may also receive, and compare that to what their full-time wages.
Yeah, Natalie Fisher, that's definitely an approach that we can explore. We've got some other options, and I think Mr. Skreg has built some impressive spreadsheets that analyze multiple scenarios.
Okay. Mike Skreg, that is definitely one of the scenarios we looked at. You know, as we had our conversation last week, a lot of the focus was on furlough, and Commissioner Hodges asked about work share program, and we acknowledged we needed to find out more about that. So, furlough, unemployment, kind of stands alone, and then, you have the federal program that might be able to supplement that with a $600 weekly payment. So, that's one scenario, and then, the work share program is another scenario that we'll be getting to here in a little bit.
Okay, thank you.
We mentioned the CARES Act, Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act. It provides the additional benefit, as we were talking, in two different programs. First, the federal pandemic unemployment compensation, or the FPUC program, and the other element to that, the pandemic emergency unemployment compensation, or PEUC program. So, the federal pandemic unemployment compensation, or FPUC program, what it does is it adds $600 per week federally funded to an individual who is impacted and receiving unemployment.
Mike Skreg here. We may touch on this later, I can't remember, but, yeah, I'm sorry, it's on slide 50. I'll just wait.
There's a number of provisions. I'm not going to read all of these to you, but in terms of timeline, this is the program that was, I'm looking for my specific dates, I believe it was March 29th was the effective date through July 25th, and then, sunset's at that point. To note, there is, the way Kansas unemployment claims are paid, it's, the language is going to read through the 31st, but that would be the last Saturday prior, so it would run through July 25th. Additional $600 per week, and according to the language here, as long as an individual is eligible to receive unemployment, whether it's a dollar, whether it's their entire $488, or anything in between, they would be eligible for that $600 weekly supplement.
It may seem odd, but the way that's set up is it's a full $600, it's not proportioned
Again, like other unemployment compensation, these $600 weekly supplements would be taxable as well. In contrast, with the pandemic emergency unemployment compensation program, or the PEUC, this extends the unemployment beyond that timeframe to allow an individual to receive an extra 13 weeks. It would just be the, up to 13 weeks of additional benefits other than what they would normally be eligible for. That's only that weekly benefit amount, it's not that additional $600 payment. And that is through the end of this year, December 31st, 2020. If there aren't any questions or comments about the CARES Act, we can jump in and discuss the Kansas Shared Work Program. Okay. The Kansas Shared Work Unemployment Compensation Program, it's a statutory program that can be used by Kansas employers in lieu of temporary layoffs. So, the rationale here is to spread the reduction through more individuals to avoid going through a layoff situation. The program's designed to help employers and employees by allowing the employers to reduce hours to a specific group or a work unit to target that area, again, to divide the available work amongst many employees, or depending on how small the work unit is, a few employees in lieu of that layoff. And then, in return, the employees would receive a reduced unemployment benefit amount during that time that they're working the reduced hours. In contrast, if you recall, in a standard unemployment situation, whether it's a full layoff or a furlough, the furlough where it might be a reduced amount, you might not have the individual qualifying for the leave. We talked about the, someone that works 40 hours a week might only be working 32 hours a week, but their wages would take them above what would qualify them, not with this situation. In this situation, if they have a 20% reduction, then they would be eligible for 20% of their calculated weekly benefit amount. The employer has to take a look at reducing at least 20, but not more than 40%. So, that is the window for the hours to be reduced. I mentioned the affected unit. It's a department, a shift, a division, a unit. The unit just has to be two or more employees, and then, at least 10% of the employees in that affected unit have to be reduced.
Commissioner Franz, I understand that the shared work program would have to apply to 10% of the employees. Could the other 90% be on furlough? Or 70% and several full-time, or whatever?
Mix and match, that was kind of my question before.
Yeah, you know, and the question is, you know, shared work program, I think, implies that there's work to be shared, and we may have units where there, in fact, is not enough work to share.
I don't know that we know the answer to that question.
Okay.
Natalie Fisher, just speculating, but it might come down to our order of operations and how the math supplied to what is the number in the unit.
Yeah, and I presume we could also define the affected unit in our own way. It would not necessarily have to correspond to some pre-existing unit in our organizational structure. It could be a working group within a department, or a work crew, or an office, for example, instead of a whole department.
I believe that would be the case, and I guess it could be the reduced remainder is the unit, and then, your work sharing amongst that remainder.
Yeah. Mayor Hoppick here, and this is jumping ahead a slide, but what scares me about some of the shared work program is, the Kansas Department of Labor must approve, and again, we don't know if they're going to approve how you divide it, and then, they still have 30 days in which to do that, so. So, we're speculating that how we want to divide it works, but they may come back and say that doesn't, so.
Which leads, Commissioner Franz, which leads me to my next question. Could you, understanding that it takes the Department of Labor 30 days to approve or disapprove this plan, could you use a furlough procedure for a work unit pending approval of the shared work plan, and then, shift employees into a shared work plan for a unit? And I don't know if that's a, I don't even know if that's a desirable option in any way, but a question.
Natalie Fisher, I did feel pretty good, because I reached out to some colleagues in human resources in the Wichita area that I know have been well-versed in the shared work program, and I asked, what's your timeline? You know, what are you seeing? One in particular had implemented this for their organization already a couple of weeks ago. He said that they had a turnaround in three days. He said that they had a turnaround in three days, and some of his colleagues in the Wichita area were seeing up to same day. I don't know specifics on how many employees were being reviewed in the plan, but it is a plan that has to be submitted by the employer, that has to provide guidelines on our approach, how much we are reducing, certifying that this is in lieu of short-term layoffs, and I think, and saying that, yes, it has to be at least 10%. So, the turnaround was much quicker than I was anticipating, so that is reassurance if we would want to go this route, that I don't know that the timelines are a long One thing to note, I don't recall if I cover it here, but maybe one of the barriers or the difficulties in implementing a plan like this is, in the event we commit to a reduction of 20%, and then we end up, whether it's inadvertently or intentionally, working the individuals over what we said was going to be the reduced hours, we would negate their ability to have benefit for any given week that that happens. So, it would be a commitment on behalf of the employer to make sure that we are playing by the rules that we said we would when we submit that to the state.
And in fact, the employee then cannot, cannot work more hours than we said they would? Okay.
Not without benefit impact.
Right. They, they could work more hours, and we could compensate them more hours, but it would negate their eligibility for unemployment.
Reduce the unemployment benefit.
And then, if we're trying to coordinate that with the FPUC $600 weekly payment, if they're not eligible for unemployment, it might jeopardize their eligibility for
Just to recap, the affected employee would be deemed unemployed under the shared work program if their hours were reduced 20 to 40%. They have to be available to work and available for full-time work with us as the employer. And again, they would be able to reduce, or receive that reduced weekly benefit amount in accordance with the decreased hours in a ratio-type scenario, as well as receiving the CARES payment, the $600 per month payment. And just for an example, I guess I will add too, the health insurance and those benefits would continue on, and in this program, we would not have, we are confident, the guidance is, we would not have to reduce or consider any of that benefit that's continuing as part of their wages, to reduce any of the benefit that they would be eligible to through the Kansas Department of Labor. The CARES payment that comes, it is administered through the Kansas Department of Labor. So, the feds are providing the supplemental wages, but it is at the state level that those payments are being administered. There's an example of the calculation on how that works, again, different from a furlough situation where the hours are just reduced. And this individual, wages are relatively low, at 1086 per hour. But, and that, in addition to their, 80% of their hours worked, they would get the $48 plus their insurance and health insurance to continue their regular wages, along with
Commissioner Franz, there appears to be a restriction on the number of hours that you can reduce. This is a maximum of 40%?
Correct.
Okay.
The length of time that the shared work program is available would be 12 months.
Mayor Hoppick, is that 12 months from when we would, we would do, start the shared, or is that from a specific date?
My understanding is from the time that we would submit the plan, and in the event is accepted, we would be able to have that plan in place for 12 months.
12 months, okay.
We would also have the ability to submit revisions to that plan, again, subject to approval of the Department of Labor.
Okay. That was, Mayor Hoppick, that was my other question, is if we were to do the shared work program and things, you know, change, and we wanted to leave some of the individuals on a shared work program and bring some back to full-time, you can do that, but it has to be approved by the Kansas Department of Labor?
My understanding is we would need to submit a revised plan.
Okay.
Saying, this is, this is our next step.
Mike Skreg, with respect to the 12 months, if it's helpful, this was an existing program. It wasn't necessarily built for, in response to the pandemic, so it's kind of a rolling 12-month, I think that was already on the books.
Natalie Fisher, just to make sure you are aware, the claims that would be paid through the Kansas Shared Work, they would still impact our claims history. So, we would experience unemployment rate impacts of an increase, which we would expect to. But again, the whole rationale is to, you know, possibly either impact more severely a smaller group of employees, or to spread it out. I would anticipate rate impacts either way, because you're going to have claims charged We had covered this already, but just to recap, in terms of putting 20 to 80% into, what does that mean in terms of hours? On a 40-hour work week, we're looking at reducing someone's schedule anywhere from eight to 16 hours per week. Within that application, we would also disclose, here's how we intend to address our benefits. For example, if we can say, this is our new definition of full-time, or we might not even have to go to that extent, but to say, any of the individuals on this work program, we're going to deem as full-time employees for this period, and continue to pay them as if they were full-time, we would just have to disclose that as part of our application for the program.
And Mike Skreg, that reminds me, this is applicable, could be applied to salaried employees as well as hourly employees. We talk a lot about hours worked and compensation, but as Ms. Fisher mentioned, we define full-time differently to something less than 40. We could then create a modified schedule and use it for salaried as well.
So, we don't fall into that, Commissioner Franz, so we don't fall in that trap of saying, you know, you can only work 10 hours, but we have to pay you for 40 anyway?
Or conversely, we want you to work 32, but you're no longer a full-time classified employee.
Natalie Fisher, through a lot of information about the shared work program, we can go ahead and talk about some other options, and then circle back for additional comments, guidance, questions, anything that you'd like to discuss.
That'd be good.
Okay. We talked about voluntary pay reductions. We would have to determine what that looks like, what that process is, how we go about it, how we would administer that. Some options that we would have to identify is, what is that amount? And I'll back up and say, this is separate from the shared work program. This is just another option that is on the table in terms of seeking guidance on, what do we need to do next? But, you know, we would need to determine, is it an amount, a flat amount, is it a percentage? Is there an effective date down the road for a pay restoration? Is this a temporary move or a permanent move? And in looking at temporary pay reductions, several considerations. We would anticipate less than full participation in that type of scenario. Possibly some equity issues, requests for individuals to agree to a program, but wanting to place conditions on their ability to voluntarily reduce pay, you know, wanting to make sure it's in exchange for, to benefit a particular individual, or a few individuals, or a division, or a small work group. We have to understand that there could be potential hard feelings in terms of open records, requests, employees would be able to find out who voluntarily reduced and who didn't. Concerns of retaliation if individuals didn't, individuals maybe having a false sense of, I'm going to be favorably considered and untouchable if I already voluntarily reduced so my pay, so nothing else can happen. Expectation that down the road, I'm going to go back to my full pay at some point. Chances are, because it's less than full participation, I don't know that we would necessarily hit our targeted savings that are needed. Again, there could be some presumptions that there wouldn't be any additional layoffs if individuals volunteered this, or reduction enforces won't happen just because my work group got together and we decided we were all going to do, you know, whatever the percentage might be. Wouldn't help us in coming out of any pay plan deficiencies that exist currently, or challenges down the road. Potentially would impact employees' retirement benefits, but as would any decreases in pay. Looking at mandatory pay reductions, again, we would have to determine what that process would be and how we would go about implementing that. Flat amount, percentage, do we want to take a look at tiers based on current income impacting the lower wage earners less than those that make above a certain threshold? And is this a temporary or permanent move? With the temporary or permanent, as far as if there is an effective date that we would attempt to restore, if, again, if any. And currently, just a sidebar, in looking at our personnel manual, the only place where we identify decreases in pay are more in the disciplinary matters, in terms of demotion and decrease, if that's an option for discipline. So, we do not have a policy that specifically guides how we go about that. Considerations, some of these are the same that I just referenced for the voluntary. We don't know our ability to meet objectives or reach outcomes, but we would presume that it's, if we are implementing these as mandatory, that we would have a better idea of what those outcomes are going to be. There would be fewer equity concerns, because it's not hit and miss. It still wouldn't help with our pay plan deficiencies and challenges, whether immediate or down the road. There may be a false sense that any additional layoffs or reductions wouldn't be needed just because of the intermediate action. We are not sure, but individuals might expect future pay rate restoration in the future. We don't know how that plays into unemployment. It might depend on how much of a decrease, and how that plays into an employee's wage levels, as far as if they would qualify for unemployment. And it might prompt some unexpected retirements. Individuals that are eligible might decide they go sooner than we thought they would, could be key positions, could be hard to fill. That might help the equation, we just don't know. It might also prompt some resignations of individuals that just want to avoid it altogether. I will add, I am working on estimations of our workforce, the retirement eligibility, and both current and then short-term, next quarter, later this year, into next year, just to give us a full picture of what we might be looking at in terms of if we were to see a large increase in those retirements. I do not have that finished yet, but that's something that I can report back at a later Modified work schedules. In a sense, some of the other programs we've already talked about, or approaches to changing the employee's status, could be seen as already a modified work schedule. But just to add on to that, it might be an across-the-board hours reduction. We might be looking at decreased service levels and/or different services not being offered anymore. Fewer hours available to the public, and not doing service X, Y, and Z any longer. That might be something as far as the ability to modify work schedules. Decreasing the operational hours in certain areas altogether. Needing to take a look at salary reductions to comply with FLSA. Mr. Skreg mentioned that already, in terms of taking a look for the other program and reducing hours, really, we are taking a look at, in that scenario, reducing pay. But in terms of just modifying the work schedules altogether, that could be something that we'd have to consider. And then, obviously, that those could be in conjunction with Department of Labor Shared I mentioned the prompting of early retirement. CAPERS, our retirement system, the benefits are calculated on a final average salary. So, for CAPERS, and I'm only going to reference tier one, which would be most of those individuals, if not all of them, unless they joined us with many, many years of, well, I guess, across the board, the ones that would be eligible for retirement, or very close to, would be what CAPERS sets aside as, or deems tier one. In that scenario, it would be an average of the three highest years, and that's how, in terms of wages, and that's how that final average salary is calculated for most employees. The highest wages are earned in their final years of employment with us. CAPERS provides a reduced benefit for early retirement, so if someone says, yeah, I'm not quite eligible for all of it, but I think I'm going to go ahead and go and take the reduced benefit and try to find other employment, that would be a potential option. Again, someone that we wouldn't identify for early retirement. And we currently don't have any incentives. And I've had actually a couple of employees call me over this last week to ask, does the city, are you considering any incentives for you to get employees to retire early? That hasn't been something we've developed in the past. Yeah. I guess we are open to guidance if we should take a look at it. One of the unintended consequences, we do have significant payouts in some areas for vacation and sick leave balances. So, to create an incentive on top of that, it might work against overall what we're trying to do anyway, in terms of bringing down our personnel expenses this year. And then, budget cuts just altogether could incentivize individuals to go. So, a number of things might prompt individuals to go and retire, or leave earlier than we anticipated. So, we just have to, to be aware of that. I'll let you take it.
So, we put together a rudimentary timeline of the different programs that we've been talking about. So, the CARES program is the $600 a week additional payment, and it would run through July 25th, as is noted there. The unemployment benefit, that $488 maximum weekly benefit amount is extended by 13 weeks, so that would take it to October 30th. The shared work program, as we discussed, is something that can be implemented for a full 12 months, so that could take us through the end of April of next year. And then, pay reductions, that's within our control, so the amount and duration of that could be determined. Just wanted to, in light of the different timelines and how, as we've kind of discussed, they interlaid a little bit, at least wanted to provide you that comparison as a point of reference.
Where would furloughs, Commissioner Franz, where would furloughs fall on this? I presume that would be, to be determined?
Yeah, they, I guess they would be a form of unemployment. In terms of kind of how they fit into this graphic, they, they would be unemployment that the employee could draw a benefit for through October 30th, assuming that it's started promptly.
Right. Mayor Hoppick here, that 10-30 is if it just started promptly, that, that could go out further if someone wasn't furloughed till May or June.
Right. I do believe that expires.
At the end of the year?
Right. The federal additional 13 weeks.
Right.
Expires at the end of the year.
So we do, okay.
Right.
Thank you.
Um, any other questions on, on that comparison? The next item is, is probably mine as well. We, at one point, I had made up my mind that it was just too uncertain, I wasn't comfortable putting together a spreadsheet, but not my nature not to try to do the math a little bit. And as we got more information, I think we got a little bit more comfortable with our understanding. So, um, have provided you a handful of spreadsheets to try to give you a sense of, you know, what it might mean for any individual employee at a, at a particular pay rate. Ms. Fisher noted the, the way that unemployment is calculated. So one caveat here is, um, as she mentioned, the, the weekly benefit amount is, looks at the last five full quarters and takes the average of the first four of those five quarters. This spreadsheet just takes a flat amount as if they're being paid today and calculates it on that. So there, there will be a little bit of discrepancy, presumably their, their weekly benefit amount might be a little bit less than calculated here if they've had raises or, or their pay has increased over the last five quarters. But setting that aside, um, the very first spreadsheet, this indicates their current compensation, what that is as an hourly rate, and what that would be as a weekly paycheck. Also, no overtime is considered in any of this math. So then the standard unemployment furlough approach, uh, it depends on health insurance or not. The guidance that we received most recently seems to indicate that health insurance would not work against, uh, the employee. So if you look at that weekly benefit amount without, in the without health insurance column, that indicates what that weekly benefit amount would be, and then it caps it at 488, um, when, when you hit that number and the, uh, the unemployment cap kicks in. So.
Commissioner, Commissioner Hodges, just real quick, that 488 is actually, is taxable income, correct?
Yes. Yep. Um, and so I, I provided a percentage calculation just to, to give you some sense of how the unemployment benefit would compare to, uh, what the employee was used to receiving on a weekly basis, bearing in mind that's just base pay, not, not any overtime. And then also provided a plus minus calculation of, uh, whether they're coming out ahead or, or behind. In the unemployment furlough scenario, with or without he, health insurance, um, it is without a doubt a reduction in income in any scenario. Uh, depending on the income, income level that they're currently making, uh, the, the shortfall just increases as the wages get higher. So then the, and so the backside of that page is same calculation, um, just carrying forward the, uh, in, uh, income amount. The next page is, um, unemployment insurance with the FPUC. So that is, um, the $600 a week additional payment. So again, it's got the annual salary, the hourly rate, the weekly pay rate, but then it takes the weekly benefit amount as previously calculated and adds $600 a week to that amount. In that case, employees, uh, start out, uh, ahead and the break, excuse me, the break-even point without health insurance being applied is, is someone making about $56,000 a year. So an employee making $56,000 a year or less and also getting the federal $600 a week would either break even or actually come out a little, well, quite a bit ahead, uh, depending on the pay rate on a weekly basis. That only works through July 25th, and at that point, the, the $600 payment is no longer available. So the backside of that sheet is the same calculation carried forward to, um, uh, the higher pay rates. The third page is the 40% shared work program. Again, annual salary, hourly rate, weekly pay, uh, then the assumption that they are reducing their work by 40%, which will be 20, uh, which would be 16 hours, and they work 24 hours at their hourly rate. So then doing the calculation for the weekly benefit amount and the proportions that Ms. Fisher already described, um, shows what their, their combination of pay from us for the 24 hours worked and the weekly benefit amount from unemployment would be. And once again, um, they, they are not left whole in that scenario, uh, and, and the shortfall increases as their income increases. The last column on that page is the combination with the FPUC program with the added $600 a week payment. Once again, that $600 a week is, is very helpful, you know, when you think about it on a, on a weekly basis. So it then results in, uh, the vast majority of employees coming out ahead. The break-even point is about $104,000 at that point. So an employee making $104,000, working 24 hours a week, claiming unemployment for the 40% reduction and getting the $600 a week from the FPUC program, uh, would theoretically break even. And then the last spreadsheet, same calculation on a 20% basis. And, and in part, you know, there's quite a few employees, I don't know that it's practical for us to, um, have them work three out of five days a week. So the 20% scenario, same calculation, assumes 32 hours worked, 20% of that, um, is benefit from the unemployment program. Again, uh, without the FPUC contribution, um, that doesn't leave any employees whole. And with the FPUC contribution, um, that leaves, uh, theoretically pretty much everyone whole through July 25th. So we talked, we previously talked about the, um, uh, possible impacts of health insurance, but as Ms. Fisher noted, in the work share program, the language is very clear that health, if we continue to pay health insurance benefits, it would not count against the employee. The other thing to bear in mind, which we talked about, was we do have to be very mindful of that schedule. If, if they're scheduled to work 32 hours a week and they exceed that, that not only does that make them ineligible for the unemployment benefit, the lack of the unemployment benefit, it makes them ineligible for the FPUC payment of $600 a week as well. You know, we, we did talk about, we could be mindful that if they work in excess of whatever the work share plan is, then as the employer, we could be intentional about having them work a full 40 hours. But, uh, in some instances, if that need arises at the end of the pay period or if the pay weak, um, that might, might be difficult. So if I can, I'm, I'm going to jump to kind of my thought process and, and then throw it open to you for questions and discussion. But, um, I think you've seen, and I hope our employees in the community have seen, that I think we've been very proactive in trying to get, uh, get our forecasting going quickly and trying to, to get our thoughts collected. Um, I think we've been very aggressive in trying to, um, identify opportunities for cost savings. I mean, our focus has been primarily the general fund because of the financial situation, but a, as far as the sales tax fund and, and going through all of our contracts, going through all of our expenditures at least three times now. Um, I think there are a few remaining opportunities to, that we could pursue some additional savings. Longevity is an example of that. But I, I think we have also been, um, I guess I want to say aggressive or at least mindful of trying to leave no stone unturned before we turn to personnel matters and things that might impact personnel. So I told you that we kind of put this, we finished this up on Friday night, and I spent the weekend really kind of ruminating about, uh, where we go from here. And I do like the phrase of trying to be nimble, um, but that the cash flow, some of the other considerations that we were trying to take into account were out of recognition that we just don't know how this is going to play out, uh, very well in terms of stay-at-home order, how long that might be, mass gatherings. Even if we come out of all that, do we go back in? Does it change the, just kind of the habits of the buying public, which then impacts our budget? So there's a lot, there's a lot of dust to, to settle yet. There's a lot of balls in the air. So as we look at, if we tried to take it from the least onerous to the most onerous for an employee or, or the most impactful, obviously doing nothing, um, for the employee would be, uh, the least impactful. It doesn't, doesn't close that two to $3 million gap that we've been talking about. And then if we try to progress our way from, um, you know, least onerous to most, I think probably the, the next step would be the combination of the work shared program and the FPUC program. Recognizing that only works through July 25th, um, but, and we really haven't had an opportunity to sit down and run the math position by position. As Natalie said, we've got 450 positions and 200 classifications, but my vision would be that in this coming week, um, we would sit down with department heads, and that's, and that's probably a two to three hour conversation per department head the first time, and I don't know how many follow-up conversations there'll be, but we could work our way through, uh, the practicality of a work share approach, uh, and try to put something together and, and estimate what savings that might represent. If we're able to do that, if we're able to take advantage of the FPUC program, um, that's the first opportunity that we really seem to have to have the city organization benefit from the, um, uh, federal stimulus money. And there's a, a little bit of an equity issue in that it is $600, all or nothing, uh, you're either eligible or you aren't. And so employee by employee, some employees will come out further ahead than others, but there's just no solving that at, at our level. If we, you know, thinking about furloughs, um, I wouldn't rule that out, but i, if we take the furlough approach, we now have even more of an equity disparity between employees that on a furlough scenario are going to, going to be seeing less income than they do today compared with shared work where an employee's working less hours and possibly getting more compensation in the short run. Recognizing that, you know, we, we do have a gap to fill and, and it's not going to solve itself, um, that doesn't rule out that furloughs don't become necessary, that doesn't rule out that a reduction in force doesn't become necessary. I guess the other thing I, I should say is on a, um, shared work approach, my assumption is that we could do it pretty much organization-wide so that, um, you know, sal, it's not, it's salaried employees, it's hourly employees. I, I say that, obviously practically, emergency responders and, and our tier one services, uh, that's, that's not workable. But we could at least try to do it across the remainder of the organization. So we could take a hard look at, at who might, uh, what positions it might be practical to do a 40% work share, what positions it might be practical to do a 20% work share. And between now and July 25th, we'd have the opportunity to see what the April, uh, stay-at-home, stay-at-home order does to us. We'd have an opportunity to see what work share can do in the way of savings and how practical it is to try to, uh, implement work share, recognizing that we may have to carry it past July 25th. We may, may have to extend it, um, you know, the full 12 months if it comes down to that. We may have to look at furloughs, uh, we may have to look at reductions in force. That also let us monitor our revenue and our expenses and savings. I mean, we've, we've been aggressive about our assumptions about expenditure reductions, and I'm hopeful that we can do that, but there's going to be some unknowns that we're going to have to react to. It could help, allow us to, and I would commit to, um, working on what a reduction in force plan might look like so that we aren't somewhere out in the future and now we need more time to do that. We've, you know, as we've struggled over the years in terms of budget and, and reserve balances, we, we've done attrition, but that's been about it. And we haven't really had a hard conversation about our staffing levels and the possibility of reduction in service. If we are going to right-size ourselves, set aside the pandemic, if we are, are going to try to address our pay plan and, and acknowledge our lack of growth in revenue, um, right sizing is probably a hard conversation that, that's overdue. We could identify additional policy revisions for future consideration, the sick leave buyback, the vacation buyback, the standard work period are things that we've brought up today. None of those represent savings that we're going to apply to this current gap, but when we talk about right sizing and trying to reset, they, they at least merit some conversation. That approach would not be an immediate reduction in force. It would not be an across-the-board pay reduction for all. It would preserve emergency services and core services that, that aren't able to work share. And there's kind of a, a trade-off there. You know, we, some employees will be able to work a reduced schedule and be left whole or, or come out ahead for a short amount of time while others are continuing to work their hours and, and get the same amount of pay. That doesn't presume, presume a voluntary pay reduction. I suppose we could, we could certainly offer that up, but I, we, we took an approach a little bit, uh, 2008 timeframe, and it, it wasn't very effective. And so the other thing I guess I would tell you is our general fund payroll between when we might be able to implement work share and when we could, and July 25th amounts to $7.8 million. So if, if we have a $2 million gap, that's 25% of $7.8 million. I'm, I want to be clear, I'm not saying that we can recover 25% of that between now and July 25th, but just.
Particularly if you rule public safety out.
Exactly.
Because that's half of it, and I don't think you can do that.
Well, yeah, we would have to look at, you know, the, the functions within public safety, and if there's an opportunity for work sharing, we would need to take that up. So the only reason I bring that up is to give you some frame of reference, if we then said, well, July, July 25th is not going to get it, we, we need to extend the work share program eight more months or whatever the, the extension might be, and we need to pursue reduction in force, and we need to pursue furloughs. But trying to take it a step at a time, trying to, you know, size things up a little bit more in terms of how, how this is going to play out, um, that probably seems to me to be the, the measured approach at the moment. Um, it, it still represents a lot of work as we sit down and look at every single position and how we structure a work share approach. And like I said, I, I remain committed to looking at reduction in force and, and right sizing the organization long-term, which is more work and more, more difficulty in terms of furloughs and, and the hard decisions to come.
Okay, I'll open it up to questions from commissioners.
Mayor Hoppick, I would move that we direct the staff to prepare a specific proposal for moving forward with staff adjustments, including furloughs and shared work programs for consideration at the city commission meeting on April 20th, 2020. And if I can get a second, I will elaborate a bit.
Commissioner Hodges, second?
Did you, was that a second?
Yes.
Okay.
By way of discussion, um, you know, I, I think that there are a number of, um, things that we can do, uh, given that we're anticipating, as, as has been said, a two to million, two to $3 million gap this year. I think we need to act fairly quickly. And as Commissioner Ryan said, we have to remain somewhat nimble in our approach because we simply, there's still much we don't know. I would suggest that we include the following things to at least be considered as a part of the staff proposal. Uh, and I'm not saying it's got to include all of these, these are my ideas about things that might include and that we can talk about. Immediate implementation of a hiring freeze, I don't know if we've done that formally, and those are usually pretty slow-acting and have, um, not necessarily really, um, great responses, but it's something we can do in addition to what we have done. Uh, I'm going to suggest that we pursue a salary reduction plan, but let's limit it to management executive staff salaries, uh, in and amount to be determined, I've, in my head, I've got 10% down, but that's obviously subject for some discussion. Implementation of work sharing for those work groups and employees who qualify, um, that could apply even to those employees engaged in what I call critical activities, the things that we absolutely have to do. I think that we are going to have to furlough some employees because in some cases, I just don't see that there's work to share, given the changes that we've made in the programming. You know, some areas of Parks and Rec come to mind, Arts and Humanities, Museum, uh, there may be others where in fact, there's just not enough work to share. So I think we are going to have to include furloughing as a, as a part of the issue. And finally, some kind of schedule for assessment of this whole, whole approach in August. of this whole approach in August of this year, after we get the July distributions and we can kind of assess where we stand at that point, whether or not the stay-at-home order's been extended for additional months, and so on. I did not include a consideration of longevity pay because that is something that we can do later in the year as, you know, probably in a, what, an October timeframe maybe, to deal with that issue.
Okay, thank you. Comments from other commissioners?
Commissioner Ryan, I, all weigh in at once here. I guess, I think the way the motion is stated, I'm comfortable with that. On the subject of voluntary and mandatory salary reductions, I think that has a chilling effect on the organization and is not, not something that I'd want to consider. It's just not good for the team to either ask people or mandate that people do that. That should be a top-down, these changes need to be a top-down decision between the city manager and the department heads, in my opinion.
Commissioner Hodges, I believe you are starting to speak.
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor Hoppick. A couple of questions, first of all, from Ms. Fisher. Do you have a sense for how the percentages break down in terms of classified public safety and executive senior management staffing, what the percentages are on that? As it relates to the workforce as a whole?
Natalie Fisher, our public safety, when fully staffed, we're, and when I refer to public safety, department-wide, which would include some civilian positions, fire, you're looking at 92 employees, police, about 112. So there's a big chunk of our total employee count right there. I have not broken down distribution-wise as far as those that would be considered the executive and senior management, but I would be happy to do that and report back.
I was just thinking, I mean, it would be interesting for me to see what percentage of employees are going to be affected by, you know, whether we go with the 20% or 40% shared work program with the FPUC benefit, which, as Commissioner Franz referenced, you know, what's our percentage of public safety employees that may or may not be exempt from these discussions, and how many, you know, what are percentages of executive and senior management that we have? So that's just something that I would be interested to see when we come back on this, if we do next week. And the other thing that I had, I know that I've asked you for this in the past, and I shared this with Mr. Schrege a couple days ago, was some kind of a rough breakdown in terms of where most of our employee wages fall, like, you know, under $50,000, 50 to 100, and over 100, just to kind of get an idea, especially when we're looking at shortfalls or overages for employees and given, you know, salary areas or wage areas, what, you know, what most people are going to be affected by, if that makes sense.
Yes.
I'm sorry?
Oh, yeah, are you still?
Sorry, Mike Schrege here. I don't know if you heard Ms. Fisher, she said yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Commissioner Davis, just one follow-up question to that. Do you want to know the percentage of employees, just body counts of, in certain categories, or the percentage of our total salaries that we pay out per category? Because, no, you could have 10% of, I don't think it's the case in this operation, but you could have 10% of the employees making 50% of the money, just to see where the pots of money are going. Because I have a feeling, I think we're going to see that we're not going to be able to treat all positions the same, at the risk of damaging morale and employee retention. Because some of the folks who may get asked to carry a percentage of this burden are ones who were probably most at risk, who, you know, in some places they say should qualify for hazardous duty pay, let alone working for less. I mean, these are all, you know, real-life emotions and issues that are going to have to be dealt with. Commissioner Franz, did the motion include just to prepare scenarios or to take action?
The motion is intended to direct the staff to come back to us next week with a scenario that may include these options, they may include other options they wish to include. They don't have to include everything here, I was just trying to lay out some potential components of the program.
Okay, and would that include certain, oh, what's the word I want to use, but certain triggers for initiating, I'll just say phase one, phase two, phase three of those scenarios? And at what point do you say, okay, it's time to move with the first wave of this?
You know, my inclination is it would be wonderful, I think, if we had time to go through phases and do phase one and then step up to phase two. But by the time we get to phase two, we're already going to know, it's going to be August or September. So, you know, I suspect that this is, let's put things in place as quickly as we can. There's going to be a little bit of phasing anyway, presuming we do both furloughs and shared work because of the timeframe to implement a shared work program, if we do both. So, you know, I'm going to leave that to the staff discretion as to what's involved, what work they have involved in making this all happen. That has to be a consideration too, and I'm not in a position to judge what that is at this point.
So it'd be a matter of juggling the numbers and getting just the perfect percentages of what type plan, but basically put it all in effect at one time, realizing there's a combination of programs for different positions.
In my view, it's as soon as possible, but that might be at different times for different work groups depending on, you know, where they fall.
Mike Schrege, I was going to volunteer, whether you call it phases, to at least put a timeline to it. And there's a lot of work to be done in the intervening seven days, but if we can, try to identify some, you know, key data points and decision points along the way, the best we can.
Commissioner Hodges here. If I can just add one further thing, and Commissioner Davis touched on it, and that is the issue of hazard pay. And while I know that right now, we're really looking at ways to reduce our expenses, I think that at some level, we need to acknowledge that we have a lot of people who are actively putting themselves in harm's way, and their family in harm's way, every day as frontline employees that have contact, you know, direct contact with the public. And I'm not just talking about, you know, police and fire and EMS workers, but it also is like our sanitation workers who are probably at pretty much the lowest end of our wage scale. And, you know, if we are able to leverage the federal program, the shared work program via the state of Kansas, and realize some savings or some payroll help with those funding mechanisms, I think at the same time, it would be great if we could look at how we can show our appreciation to those first-line, frontline staff members. I know a lot of, on a federal level, there's a program called the Heroes Fund that deals with hazard pay, that's been proposed, it hasn't been passed. One senator has introduced something called pandemic premium pay to recognize that not just, you know, healthcare workers, but a lot of different workers are deserving of hazard pay, additional compensation. So, you know, whether or not we can access any future programs, I think it would be, it would be really helpful and a good morale builder, we've been talking about morale, to acknowledge the contributions that these workers are making every day and the risks that they're putting themselves and their families at by being out in the public.
Ms. Commissioner Davis, a while back, just during normal budgeting times, there was a concept that we discussed briefly called budgeting for outcomes. Just in normal times, your city budget or state budget should reflect what your priorities are, and if things aren't really high priority, they really shouldn't take a big space in the budget, despite they having been there for decades, you know, if it's not a priority issue, we really need to examine why it's there. And I think some of this decision-making that we're talking about doing now will include how we define what our most important roles are to our citizens. What is it that people in the city of Salina need us to do for them for the next year? Because certain critical services we're going to have to maintain. And I think however we skew the budget, it should reflect that, and they're going to be, all of us have pet projects, pet things, we like to keep going, but there'll be some casualties along the way. But if we keep our sight on those things that are most important that people look for us to do, we can probably be financially more efficient, but at the same token, provide the basic services that people expect. Because if we're not providing services, we're going to have unhappy folks and you might have an unsafe city.
Commissioner Franz, I don't disagree with any of that specifically, but I do have concerns. I agree, we're going to have to look at reducing services, there's no question about that, and some of those things may be very uncomfortable for people. You know, the question of morale, the question of, you know, hazard pay, you know, I don't know how you draw a circle around those who would qualify for hazard pay or not. I mean, you get to the edges and you will find out that most of our employees have contact with the public most, much of the time. And if you want a chilling effect, to me, a $3 million deficit over eight months is fairly chilling. That is going to be extremely difficult to deal with, and we're just going to have to accept that we can't do the things we want to do. You know, I don't know any other way around that. We cannot do the things that we would normally want to do, and we're going to have to accept the fact that things are going to have to go on hold for a while, and probably more than just this year. So, you know, I think we need to get a specific proposal in front of us, and then we can talk about the components of that and see how we want to proceed.
Yeah.
Once we have that in front of us.
Mayor Hoppick here. Thank you for the motion, Commissioner Franz. I do believe that the sooner the better, as far as whether we're looking at furloughs or the FPUC program. The FPUC program is the only thing that the federal government has given us as a tool, and that's that $600 that we can help our employees with, and then that gives us till that July 25th to get a better feel for where we're at as far as a community, as far as if we've come out of the stay-at-home. Are we starting to see a revitalization of the community and spending that will help us down the road? So I really would like for us to, and I know this is putting a lot on staff, as if you guys haven't had anything else to do, but to try to come back with some kind of a proposal to us next week as far as individuals, whether we're looking at furloughs or a shared work program for people.
Man, I just want, Commissioner Davis, if seven days, or by day five and a half, you realize seven days is just not going to be enough time. I mean, we might need to meet next Monday and set up a special meeting two days later, but I mean, this is obviously something you want to get right as best you can the first time around. Is seven days realistic?
I'm going to, we'll try. We produced a lot in other seven-day periods in the past 30 days, so I'm not prepared to say that we can't.
Yeah, Mayor Hoppick, the other thing that bothers me, and I hope that Ms. Fisher's correct, but when this, and I don't know how inundated the state's getting with the shared work program, but, you know, they have, they stayed in there, they have up to 30 days to get back with us, and they can approve or disapprove that. So if we don't get right on it, then you're another 30 days down the road and you're, you have less ability to tap into that, that CARES Act.
Yeah, Commissioner Franz, I think that the other timeline is the FPUC timeline, which expires-
That's what I did, yeah, FPUC, yeah, that's what I-
In July, in July, is that correct, July 25th?
July 25th, yeah.
You know, if we want to enable our employees to be able to take advantage of that, which does benefit those at the lower end of the scale more than at the higher end of the scale, you know, we need to get on it.
And if Commissioner Ryan here, if Commissioner Davis' thought was to put an extra meeting in there, if staff can't finalize a plan or bring it together enough to present to us, I'm open to having additional meetings next week if we need-
Exactly.
-to get to that end.
Mike Schrege here. You know, we've brought you a lot of detail, I appreciate your patience as we've worked through it through the weeks, and I appreciate the direction you're providing. What I didn't want to do is run off ahead of you or in a different direction. You've provided consensus time and time again as it relates to this topic, and that's very helpful as we talk about our revenue projections, as we talk about our expenditure reductions, and now as the conversation moves to personnel. And so, don't disagree with you, I understand both the sense of significance and the sense of urgency, and I appreciate your patience. We've been cranking out things that you would normally see on a Thursday, Friday night, Saturday, Sunday. We'll get it to you just as soon as we can get it wrapped up, we'll continue to do that.
Yeah, Mayor Hoppick here. I had one more comment I wanted to make is, I hope the city employees understand that we do feel that they're important, and we're trying to do the best we can to help as many of them as possible. As a business owner, I have the ability to do what I want with my employees because I'm using my own dollars. What we have to be aware of here is not only are we, you know, addressing the lives of our workers in the community, but we also have to answer to the taxpayer. And we have numerous taxpayers, and I believe I said this last week, that are currently unemployed. So I think we have to be fair to the community as a whole, and I think that's what we're trying to do here, is bring everybody in and hopefully, hopefully in six months or nine months, that this is all behind us and we won't have to worry about it.
Well said.
Yes, well said.
Thank you. Do we have any comments?
Looking at the callers, I don't see any, but just to be safe, if anyone wishes to address the commission, please press star nine. Refresh the screen, and I see none.
Mayor Hoppick here, I will look for a motion, but before I do that, I-
We have a motion.
I guess we have-
I would call a question.
Question, okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favors? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, so the question is called, now we'll have a vote on the primary motion, just to clarify.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to do it. You want to restate your-
I will be glad to do that. I move that we direct the staff to prepare a specific proposal for moving forward with staff adjustments, including furloughs and shared work programs for consideration at the city commission meeting on April 20th, 2020.
Okay, and we, that's been-
Commissioner Davis, second?
That's the motion's second.
Actually, we already have a second.
We already had a second, so, yeah.
So now we just need to vote.
Yeah, we need to vote. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you, staff. And again, when we started this, I said we'd have some tough conversations, and obviously this is probably the toughest one we're having to have, so- So, so thank you, everyone. Thank you, Natalie, for your work. Okay, that leads us to 7.4.
Ms. Pack will be joining us again. And while she's doing that, we've got a couple of support people on the line. David Artaberry and Gina Rikoff, I believe, from Gilmore and Bell is on the line. I'm going to unmute both of them. Just want to forewarn them before I take them off of mute. David, are you there? David? How about Gina? Gina, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here. Like, I apologize, you unmuted me, but I just unmuted myself.
Okay. And how about Gina?
She was on earlier, she might have dropped off.
Yeah, she's still showing up on my end. We'll see if she stepped away. That was a long conversation.
Or napping, you can holler.
I think we can go ahead and-
I didn't know if you already read it or not.
No, not yet.
Item 7.4, authorized sale of general obligation internal improvement bonds, series 2020-a and temporary notes, series 2020-1. 7.4a, receive report on bids received. 7.4b, second reading ordinance number 20-11029, authorizing the issuance and delivery of general obligation internal improvement bonds, series 2020-a. 7.4c, resolution number 20-7816, prescribing the form and details of and authorizing the delivery of general obligation internal improvement bonds, series 2020-a. And 7.4d, resolution number 20-7817, authorizing and directing the sale and delivery of general obligation and temporary notes, series 2020-1.
If I could jump in, I see I have two lines, one from Gilmore and Bell, which I assumed was Gina Rikoff, and one that's specifically Gina Rikoff. So I unmuted the one that says Gina Rikoff, and I bet you she's here now.
I am, I am, thank you.
Do you happen to know who the Gilmore and Bell line is?
I bet that my colleague Kevin Wimpy is also on the line with that.
Okay, well, he's unmuted as well, then. Okay, I'll turn it over to Ms. Pack.
Good afternoon again. Debbie Pack, Director of Finance. March 28th, City Commission approved resolution 20-7814, authorizing the offering of public sale of general obligation temporary notes and bonds. Pursuant to that resolution, the city distributed preliminary official statement and a notice of sale to proceed to prospective bidders. The notice of sale notified the bidders that the city would receive bids on April 13th at 1:00 p.m., and that commission would consider all bids for that from them on their, at their meeting on April 13th. The city held a rating call with Moody's on March 26th, and the sitting's rating was confirmed, as Mr. Skregg mentioned earlier, at AA3. I do, we do have several people on the line, but I'd like to turn it over to Dave Artaberry from Stiefel Nicholas at this moment to kind of do a review about the bids and the report of the bids and the interest rates that we received, if he would do that for us.
Sure. Thank you, Debbie. Yeah, as Debbie mentioned today, the city took bids both for a series of general obligation bonds and a series of general obligation notes. The proceeds of these notes provide funding for a number of different improvement projects. The bond issue includes improvements to fund landfill sale number 20, the preliminary design work for the Smoky Hill River renewal, design work for Ninth Street Bridge, police facility parking, and golf course irrigation project. The temporary notes include just three projects, and that is Pheasant Ridge Edition 3, Stone Lake 2, but the majority of the temporary note is for the new police training facility. The city received bids today up until 1:00. And I have to tell you, given everything that's been going on in the financial markets over the last few weeks, we were a little bit nervous, at least we were about a week or so ago. Fortunately, the municipal bond market over the last week has really settled down, and we were really, we felt good going in today that we were going to receive a healthy number of bids, and we did. And we were even more relieved to see what really aggressive interest rates that each of the different series of bonds and notes received. The bonds ended up getting a total of four bids on them, and the bids, the interest rates on those bids ranged from 1.9289% to 2.17%. And this was bonds that were, are going to be repaid over a total of 15 years. The best bid for the bonds was submitted by Robert W. Baird &amp; Company. That's a firm out of Wisconsin that usually has a number of regional firms, a lot of regional banks tend to bid with Robert W. Baird. The other bids were submitted by the Baker Group, FHN Financial, and Key Bank. All of those are sort of national bidders on, on bond issues, sort of in this, in this size range. The temporary notes ended up getting a total of three bids. One bid was, with the best interest rate, was submitted by UMB Bank, and that interest rate was 1 point, let me pull it up again here quick, 1.218785%. The other two bids came from, from Commerce Bank and Oppenheimer, and rates were 1.88% and 2.13%. The bid that was submitted by UMB Bank actually represented and was submitted really on behalf of Bennington State Bank. So we were real glad to see, you know, local participation in a very aggressive bid from that local bank. So all of the bids were reviewed to make sure that they were mathematically correct, to make sure that they complied with all the other terms and conditions of, of the bidding documents, and they did. They all, both of the best bids also supplied a required good faith deposit, and those were received. One of them was received probably about five minutes before the bank's deadline cut off. The money, their deposits are in the bank, so we see no reason that you wouldn't want to accept the two bids. Obviously, answer any questions that you might have. Oh, let me just also touch on one thing. As part of the process of evaluating bids, what we also will do is, if needed, is resize the bond and note issue. We did that, and the temporary note issue size ended up at $7 million and $50,000, and the bond issue size ended up at $5 million 210,000. Obviously, welcome any questions.
Commissioners, Mike Skregg here. I'm sure you know, you've been through the exercise, but admittedly, it seems a little counterintuitive to be having all the financial conversations we've had about COVID-19 and the impacts on our budget and budget gap and, and personnel measures. But the point to be remembered here is, we've cut back this debt issuance to our outstanding obligations that we're already committed to, by way of projects that were temp note financed for a, essentially a one-year duration that are coming due, the temp notes are coming due and need to be refinanced, as well as projects that we're committed to by way of contract, by way of petition and development agreement for special assessment financing. So as part of the exercise that we've gone through in the last couple of weeks, we've looked at all of our contractual commitments and our expenditures and tried to dial that back to what you collectively thought was a necessity. So as counterintuitive as it sounds, we're certainly glad that we got bids and got favorable rates, and we can at least issue this debt that allows us to pay this over time versus lump sum.
The only other thing I would add is that we have noted in the staff report where the debt service payments will come from, for each of those bonds, property tax, solid waste for the landfill, property tax for the police parking facility, the sales tax for Smoky Hill, and the property tax for North Ninth Street Bridge and the golf course irrigation. And then the temporary notes, that, that interest in financing will be put back into the project and will be paid out of those sources when we issue bonds. Does anyone have any questions for myself or the experts on the phone?
I have a question. We make the motions on 7.4c and d, do we need the interest rate in the, in the, who bought the bonds as part of that?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, Commissioner Franz, my comment, I think that the interest rate and the approved bidder are referenced in the documents-
Document itself, yeah.
The respective ordinances and resolutions.
We did get updated documents after the bids today, so.
Is there any questions from the commission for the bond counsel or for Debbie? If not, Mike, is there anybody on the phone that would like to comment?
If anybody wishes to comment, press star nine. I see none.
We do have three separate action items this evening. One is the ordinance 20-11029, resolution dash 207816, and resolution 207817, of which you have the same options to approve as stated, to approve with minutes, to postpone, or to vote to deny either of these, and we will need to take those separately. Staff recommends, renes, that you approve these options.
Commissioner Franz, I move that we approve, I should address the mayor. Mayor Hoppick, I move that we approve ordinance number 20-11029 on second reading, authorizing the issuance and delivery of general obligation internal improvement bonds, series 2020-a.
Commissioner Ryan, second.
Mayor Hoppick, we have a first and a second to approve ordinance number 20-11029. I will ask for a roll call.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Franz?
Aye.
Commissioner Hodges?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Mayor Hoppick?
Aye. That passes 5-0. Leads us to 7.4c.
Commissioner Franz, again, Mayor Hoppick, I move that we approve resolution number 20-7816, prescribing the form and details of and authorizing the delivery of general obligation internal improvement bonds, series 2020-a.
Commissioner Davis, second.
Mayor Hoppick, we have a motion and a second to approve resolution number 20-7816. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? That passes 5-0. Okay, that leads us to 7.4d.
Mayor Hoppick, I move that we approve resolution number 207817, prescribing the form and details and affirming the delivery of general obligation temporary notes, series 2021.
Commissioner Davis, second.
Mayor Hoppick, we have a motion and a second to approve resolution number 20-7817. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? That also passes 5-0. And thank you very much to bond, that, those rates are excellent. I was not probably expecting quite that much good news in one day, so thank you. Okay, that leads us to 7.5.
Item 7.5, resolution number 20-7826, temporarily closing the municipal court of the City of Salina, Kansas until further order of this municipal court judge.
Mayor Hoppick, I'll start with that one, and you moved a little faster than I thought. I tried to give Judge Stoss a heads up, but you moved pretty quickly on the last item. But this is a pretty straightforward item, and I'll, in my multitasking, I've also lost the staff report. But what I can tell you, as you know, we have postponed court cases in municipal court because of the pandemic and the impact of the stay-at-home order. And that was done with my consent by Judge Stoss and municipal court judge. The Kansas Supreme Court has since ruled that the requirements of a speedy trial and some of the expectations in municipal courts can be waived based on a governing body authorization of postponement or suspension of court. And so this resolution is really for you as the governing body to take the action contemplated by the Kansas Supreme Court to get us synchronized with, with their recent guidance that they issued. And Mr. Bengtson was very instrumental in putting all this together and may have additional details. I'm still struggling to find my staff report back.
Greg Bengtson, legal counsel. I think Mr. Skregg covered it well. The order was by the chief justice, and it does specifically refer to those courts that have been closed by the governing body. The resolution, you may have noticed, anticipates rather than you all having to act in terms of any removal of the closure or discontinuation of the closure that we expected, and it's up to you all, but expected that you all might wish to leave that to the order of our municipal court judge, Judge Stoss, for her to make that determination when the time comes to resume operations, I'm sure in consultation with the city manager, but-
And Judge Stoss is now on the line with her digital hand raised, so. Judge, can you hear us?
Good afternoon. I can, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I don't know how much of it you caught. I kind of dove into a summary, but I'll turn the floor over to you, Judge.
Well, I think Mr. Skregg has covered it pretty well. The legislature actually took some action to relax some of the statutory timeframes regarding speedy trial, filing deadlines, and so on, contingent upon order from the Kansas Supreme Court, which the Kansas Supreme Court then took that action on March 18th. However, that initial order only applied to the district courts and the appellate courts. So then the court issued a later order specifically relating to relaxing the same type of timelines in the municipal courts, and as Mr. Bengtson already pointed out, part of that second administrative order from the Kansas Supreme Court was contingent upon the governing body taking action. I had already issued administrative orders canceling dockets for, the initial order canceled dockets for two weeks, then another administrative order was issued on April 6th, canceling dockets indefinitely. However, in order to ensure the protection of the relaxation of speedy trial guidelines, that's why we presented the resolution for your consideration this afternoon. And so the options that have been identified by staff are to approve resolution 20-7826, approve that resolution with amendments as the city commission sees appropriate, postpone consideration of the resolution to a specific time, and provide staff direction regarding additional information or amendments the commission would like to request for consideration, or vote to deny the resolution, which would result in the speedy trial timelines and other filing deadlines not being applicable to the line of municipal courts, and the staff recommends option number one. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Judge Stoss, Commissioner Davis, what general information would be worthwhile to give folks who may have pending cases as far as what they need to do, as far as time limits, if they're under any liability for what would have been missed deadlines, or any general words of wisdom?
Well, the commission has been struggling over the last few meetings. I have the same type of struggle with trying to help people in knowing how to deal with their issues in municipal court. When we issued the initial order that canceled two weeks of dockets, we rescheduled those cases for specific dates. And of course, at this point, we don't know whether we will be able to be back in operation on those new dates, and we're trying to avoid multiple rescheduling of cases. on those new dates, and we're trying to avoid multiple rescheduling of cases. For us, the primary consideration is, of course, the gathering limits, and it's pretty difficult to have an open public court proceeding and limit people in attendance to 10 people. So what we have posted on our website, information about how people can make payments, there are some options to make payments through our third-party vendor, either online or over the phone, there's a drop box in the police department, and all of that information is available on our page on the city's website. If someone walks up to the court, we do have a sign posted on the doors that gives them the same information directing people to the website. As far as trying to get cases rescheduled, once we are back in operation, it's our intention to schedule new dates and notify individuals of those, rather than putting the burden on them to contact the court and initiate rescheduling of their cases.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Judge Stoss, I, Commissioner Franz, I think I know the answer to this based on your answer to the previous question, so it is true that the court is closed entirely, it's just not that we have stopped having hearings and trials.
Well, part of our struggle with preparing this resolution for your consideration is what does it mean to close the court? Because I have had cases since we locked the doors to the public where I have issued orders, and there are situations that continue to arise where the court has to take some action. Individuals that are being arrested and decisions need to be made about whether they should be detained or not, or under what circumstances can they be released, and so on. So there is some court activity taking place, but as far as regular hearings, no. We are not having any regular hearings. We do not have staff in the office on a daily basis that are processing payments, that are filing new cases. The prosecutor's office is in a similar situation. They are not staffed to process cases, to prepare new cases for filing at this point.
Okay. Question answered. Thank you.
Any comments?
I don't see any citizens on the line, but just to be safe, I'll refresh the software and ask if anyone wishes to speak, to press star nine. Okay, none.
Okay, with that, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Commissioner, I'm sorry. Mayor Hoppick, Commissioner Davis, I move that we approve resolution number 20-7826, temporarily closing the municipal court of the city of Salina, Kansas until further order of the municipal court judge.
Commissioner Ryan, I second.
Okay, Mayor Hoppick, we have a motion and a second to approve resolution number All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes 5-0. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that leads us to 7.6.
Item 7.6, authorize the purchase of four police vehicles as approved in the 2020 sub-CIP budget.
Okay, Ms. Pack.
Debbie Pack, Director of Finance. These four vehicles were approved in the 2020 sub-CIP on December 9, or December 9, 2019. They were four of 33 items under vehicles and equipment that were approved at that time. Due to COVID, we brought this information and some others back to the commission on March 30th, and you indicated to us that you wanted us to move forward the purchase of these vehicles. The total budgeted for these particular vehicles was $166,556. We received one bid from Long McCarthy for the actual vehicles for a total of $118,604.56, and one bid from KCOM from the add-on equipment for a total of $48,741.60. The subtotal of both those bids is $167,346.16, which comes in $790.16 over the original budget. The total original budget for the sub-CIP was $1,090,000. Of that, $902,000 have been previously removed from the budget, leaving $187,300 in the budget, for which $166,885 is still available for the purchase of these vehicles. There's, city staff has four options for commission to approve the 2020 vehicle and equipment purchase of four police patrol vehicles from Long MacArthur in the amount of $118,604.56, and approve the bid from KCOM to outfit the vehicles with necessary add-on equipment in the amount of $48,741.60 for a total of $166,556, and authorize the city manager to sign contracts with selected vendors, approve the purchase with amendments as you deem appropriate, postpone consideration of the purchase of these four police vehicles, or do not approve the purchase of these vehicles at this time. Staff recommends option number one.
Mike Skregg here. If I could add one clarification, as much as we've deferred equipment purchases across the board, and I think that's demonstrated by cutting $900,000 out of a $1 million budget, we did look at these, and what really got our attention is the four units being replaced will average in excess of 160,000 miles each if we don't replace them. And then we'd be going into a subsequent year to continue to have them in rotation. So it looked like they'd be approaching 200,000 miles plus, and just didn't feel that was prudent.
Questions or comments?
When is the anticipated? Commissioner Franz, when is the anticipated delivery?
March 31st was the cutoff for the 2020 models, so these will be 2021 models. I believe the bid said that they would be available in 45 days, 120 to 180 days.
Okay, so it could be four to six months, at which time the existing vehicles will have even more mileage on them?
But 160 was the estimate at year-end.
Okay.
I say year-end, prior to replacement.
Commissioner, I'll be taking up a donation for the $790.16.
At this point, sure.
Okay, is there anyone on the line that would?
There is not. I'll refresh again. If anyone wishes to address the commission, they need to press star nine. I see none.
Okay, if not, I'll bring it back to the commission.
Mayor Hoppick, I move we approve the 2020 vehicles and equipment purchases of four police patrol vehicles from Long MacArthur in the amount of $118,604.56, and approve the bid from KCOM to outfit the vehicles with necessary add-on equipment in the amount of $48,741.60 for a total of $166,556, and authorize the city manager to sign contracts with selected vendors.
Second, Commissioner Davis.
I'd like to make a clarification there. As I read that, and you said we need $790, the total of the bids is actually $167,346.16. The amount that I put in that option was actually the budgeted amount.
I move that we amend my motion to the corrected subtotal.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to purchase four police vehicles approved in the 2020 sub-CIP budget. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes 5-0. Okay, any development business? I don't believe so. Other business? I have maybe one thing. It appears that, you know, we're dealing with a lot of budget issues, and we have, you know, we're asking staff to do quite a bit, and we're going to be asking some employees for some reductions, probably in hours and stuff, and I was wondering, as far as leadership goes, if it would be prudent for the commission maybe to waive our $300 that we receive monthly as just kind of a good faith to show that we are also a part of the issue that we're dealing with at the city level.
Commissioner Davis, I.
Commissioner Hodges, I do that, but yes, I think it'd be a wonderful thing to do as a group.
Commissioner Ryan, I agree. I'm in.
Okay.
I'll hardly agree. Now, it should be noted, some of us, I think, are giving 10% of our income to the employee breakfast, so I don't know if you want to keep that 10% still going to the employee appreciation breakfast in November.
By fund accounting, we'll get it there.
I appreciate that. I figured the commissioners would feel that way. I just think that's a good way for us to step forward and show some leadership, so. Is there anything else that needs to come before the commission?
Commissioner Ryan, I move we adjourn.
Second, Commissioner Davis.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
Cut it down by a couple hours. Good job.